I'm gonna call the Board of Supervisors back to order from recess. It's April 14th, 2015, for our regular scheduled board meeting. We'll note that we have a quorum. And I'd like to call on Don Smith, Rural Retreat United Methodist Church, to our invitation, and remain standing for our pledge.
Shall we pray? Holy and ever-living God, compassionate, merciful, we your servants are listening. We come before you today in a time of great anxiety and fear, yet your prophet Isaiah has asked, "Have you not known? Have you not heard? The Lord is the everlasting God, the creator of the ends of the earth. You do not faint or grow weary. Your understanding is unsearchable. You give power to the faint and strengthen the powerless, and the young will fall exhausted. But those who wait upon you shall renew their strength. They shall mount up with wings like eagles; they shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not faint." Give us the courage to dream new dreams, to see new possibilities, to look forward with hope, resting on your blessed covenant, that each day is a new day. As your spirit is poured forth upon the earth, that a straight path might be made in the wilderness, and all your children will make it home. So today, with abiding faith and calm assurance, we invoke your presence on these proceedings. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, everyone. We move right into our agenda. We have citizens' time. We have Sam Crockett, our treasurer, signed up first, Sam. And he has three subjects to speak on.
Just two. Just two.
Two.
First one, during the budget time, I said something about some part-time money for now, due to the fact that my bookkeeper is going in next week for knee surgery, and she's gonna be out for a while. I believe we can get Linda Smith to come in and fill in for us if we need to. But we're going, you know, we've been right busy here. DMV stops and that type of stuff. We did 60 of them yesterday, and the girls were real, I wasn't here today, I was at a meeting in Stanton, and the girls were real busy today with them, too, so. But Debbie's gonna be out for six to eight weeks, and I hope that's all she's out. But we're between DMV stops and warrants and that type of stuff. It's a busy time for us, and I'd like y'all to consider that. The other thing is, we've been looking at computer systems for three or four years, and have gone through RFPs and all that stuff. And we thought we had a process last year on Keystone that we liked, and then we decided it was too expensive. And then this week, Thursday, we had another meeting, and it had the Munis, Tyler Munis system, said, you know, that's what we're gonna buy. But that was one of the systems we rejected in our RFPs time, for a couple of reasons. In my office, and I think in Faze, it didn't really have the coverage we needed for tax collection and assessment. Faze can tell you about that part of it. But also, we rejected it because it was so expensive. I mean, I don't know why it's changed now. But I think, before we go into it, you know, just buy a system, that's a lot of taxpayer's dollar. You know, we don't get something we want. I mean, we bought that system four years ago, Keystone, Sun Guard, thank you, I can remember it. And that really hadn't panned out to like we wanted it, I think. So it's, somebody did tell me that Sun Guard has gotten some more systems now that we may need to look at, too. But I just think we ought to look at, look at that a little bit stronger before we go out and spend that kind of taxpayer's money. I've talked to four people that were on that list that Brooks gave us the other day. Three out of four of them aren't really too pleased with it. That's City of Radford, they have it in their administration, and it's doing all right for that part of it. They tried to put it in the treasurer's office, and they had to take it out because they couldn't get it to work. And Janet said they're gonna try to put it back in this year. Henry County, down there with Scott Grinstaff, they bought it in 1999. They've had it all this long. And Scott said, "We finally learned to use it." And he says, "It's a great learning curve on it, and there's still things in there." He said, "We can't use it." It's sort of like what Bright's system was, tried to make it totally inclusive for everything and everybody, and it's just got some problems with it, maybe for the smaller locations. One of the main problems they had with it was, well, Radford told me, and so did Montgomery County, if you have problems, they're slow to respond to your request. Their IT department can't really do anything with them much, that, you know, you have to cause Munis to work on it. And they're very pricey for their service calls. Once you get, after you get it installed and get established, you know, then when you need them, they're very expensive and pricey. Roanoke County's the only one that really likes it. Kevin told me today that, you know, he lapped it to it, and his people did, that their commissioner revenue still hasn't had the time to use it and stuff. So I just hope we can take a look at it a little longer before we go out and buy it and see if that's really what we want. You'd think somewhere there'd be a computer system that everybody would like, but we haven't found it yet, I don't think. But I just, just my feelings about it, and like I said, I have talked to four localities, and three of them are just real shaky about not pleased, not too pleased with it. I just won't pass that on. All right, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
Linda Myers?
Perhaps you should go because...
Okay. You were just next, that's why I called your name. I'll let Fay.
I also have talked to four different people. You'll have to excuse me, I've got the crud.
You could've talked to the back.
I've talked to four different counties, and all four counties that I have talked to, there's no real estate assessment program on Munis Tyler. They all use PROVAL, whatever that is. I don't know what PROVAL is. The Isle of Wight County, they love everything about, on the finance end of it and everything, but as far as the real estate, it's just not there. City of Radford, Kathy says it's really difficult to learn, and she also uses PROVAL, whatever, I don't know what PROVAL is. That's the program that they use because it does not have the real estate. It does not have any audit program for the state income tax that we do, the state income tax in our office. And Montgomery County, they've had it for quite some time, but they just haven't learned to use it. And the City of Roanoke, they told me they had been told not to talk about it much, very much, so I don't know what that means. So, but I wish y'all would just think about it, you know, of trying to find a computer system that's gonna work for everybody in the county. I just don't think it's out there.
You know, and I'll say this, Fay and Sam, I said, you know, the biggest thing we're just looking at, I mean, when we start patching like Sun Guard and Keystone together, you know, for what we would pay for Tyler Munis, you know, in a couple of years, we would save that much money on the...
Yeah, and all the counties told me it was quite expensive because they require that you update every two years, and those updates, and that was another thing, they told me, every time you did an update, it messed something up, and it took them like six months to get it fixed. So, I mean, you know, it's just, but I would really like to have a chance to look at the program before, you know, before y'all say, I would like to, you know, go and look at it somewhere. Because you can tell a whole lot more by looking than you can talking to somebody.
Okay, y'all was going, y'all going to Roanoke?
We'll try to go to Roanoke whenever we can.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay.
Mr. Chairman, I want to ask you a question. I mean, I know that we, we make budgetary decisions. I don't know, is this a decision we make? Is it, okay, so then that will be part of our budget discussions?
Yes.
As we continue, okay.
Well, the money's in the budget.
I understand.
It's in the budget. Ms. Myers?
Good evening, gentlemen. I have three subjects tonight. I do a lot with the Glade Mountain Saddle Club, and we're at the Rural Retreat Arena, or the Rural Retreat Facility, and we do have a 911 program and administrator or whatever here. What's the scoop about an AED signage and the unit? Is that available through the county? Can you help us get that for the fairground? Because we have a few people within our club that are certified to do that, in case there was a medical emergency there.
She's talking about electric defibrillator.
Oh.
Not an IED, no, an AED.
Do we have, I mean, besides the rescue squads, do we have any, I know we have them in the courthouse.
Some of the courtrooms.
Schools have some.
School systems, places. The issue with them, they gotta be, I understand, places getting recharged, heated and cooled at all times. Is there a place out there to do that?
Well, not heated totally, but if it was a seasonal use, because that's when the fairground is used most often, is when the temperatures are moderate, let's say. So those are the activity times from May through September, where you really, I don't, I'm not sure, but I would imagine that normal temperatures would be okay.
We'll just have to check with the manufacturer, see what kind of conditions they have to be in.
Okay, and if that's available through the county, or through Grants, or Mount Rogers, or I don't know where that kind of stuff comes from. But if there's any chance that you could look into it for us, for the safety of the community, okay? And we had the comprehensive plan meeting in Speedway the other night, and I'd like to thank you guys for setting that up. The fellow that came was very nice, however, he was a little bit out, not a little bit, way out of his element, and he did the best he could, but he was just not prepared. Fortunately, or maybe unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of people there, and so it was kind of irrelevant. Maybe we could do a better job in the future as far as advertising, and having somebody that knows what they're doing, okay? The guy was really nice, but it didn't work. And also, are you going to address the Forest Service tonight? You're going...
Yeah, it's, we'll, yeah, it's in the agenda, we'll talk about it.
Okay, can we speak about that when it comes, or?
Yes, I'll let you and people from the county here speak, but wait to hear what Mr. Dalton presents to you before you may want to wait.
Okay, well, we have gotten together with Bill Carrico, and a meeting has been set up at Withfield Community College at seven o'clock on Monday, the 24th. Monday, the 24th, 27th. And so we were hoping that you would all join us there at that time, so put that on your calendars, and we've got other elected officials coming and so on, okay? And we'll address this.
Thank you. Is anyone else would like to speak during citizens' time? Here and none, I'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is approval of the March 24th minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one question.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the March 24th minutes. Are there any corrections or changes? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Sorry.
Chair votes. Okay, payment of invoices. I have a motion to pay the invoices.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
I have a second.
Second.
Is there any question on any invoice? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Chair votes. Moving around along to old business, county administrator's search update. Mr. Dalton?
You have in the board pack, it's a report from John Insavina, County Community Profile, y'all approved the last time it's been posted. And they've advertised on the Spring State West website, Waters and WMA, National Association of County, Bayco, Virginia Municipal League, Public Service, American Society of Public Administrators, job.com, careersandgovernmentindeed.com, Twitter, Facebook, and also to the 10 colleges and universities that have public administration. They also had a direct mailing to over 194 identified professionals throughout the country. To date, they've received, as of April the 8th, six application letters.
And that's why I read that. Okay, any questions about the search update? Mr. Dalton? Okay, is anything else on our old business, Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Okay, moving around along to new business, and notice of trail closures, I'll let Mr. Dalton explain what we've learned today, and the email we've received today.
What we've done is, Ms. Myers was kind enough to provide us the statement and add it into the pack, so what we've been trying to do is investigate this whole issue. What we've done is, so that we could all be at the same place, on the day meeting, we've invited the National Forest Services representatives to come and speak in our session. Invited Mr. Lee tonight, he's given us some information to come back that day. What we want to do is understand the whole issue from both sides, and get a complete picture of what's going on. And it sounds like a little delayed, but they had a meeting, Ms. Merz, I invited her tonight for the Forest Service, but they were having a meeting in Carroll County with the group over there, and the earliest she could come was on the 24th. And we'll be more than happy, Linda, and Tommy Anderson's come to the county to speak also with the subject. And that's sort of where we're at, but we'd like to, from your perspective, Linda, to get more information.
Well, we're, at this point in time...
Come on, let, to the mic.
At this point in time, we just would like you guys to ask the Forest Service, when they do put out this final assessment, if the public could have 90 days to respond instead of the 30 days that they have on their agenda. So we'd like to ask you, on behalf of your constituents, to make that a positive resolution of some sort, to make sure that the comment period be extended. And then we'd also like to make sure that there is coverage. Local newspapers, the Roanoke Times is not good enough. Local newspapers, Danny G., and so on and so forth, notify people so they can come out on either this Tuesday, well, that you guys are having your meeting, and we hope to do, we're doing a lot of advertising for the 27th, and we're hoping to get people out at that point in time, too. But the 90-day comment period is really crucial, to give everybody enough time to respond. So if you could do that at this point. So, and thank you for taking the initiative and getting them here on the 28th, that'll be just wonderful.
One thing, Ms. Merz, I promised the day on the telephone, that every group in the county that had a concern, that they would meet at different locations and discuss the issue, where they see and explain what their feelings are, or what's going on with, the way she explained it, there's, they're talking about rail closures, but there's no proposal to close any trees.
We'll see. Okay, well, we'll get that information out to people so they can contact her and set up meetings with local organizations, in addition to the ones in the radio world. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, I used to speak in front of sisters, distinguished groups. I'm Tommy Anderson, I'm a real estate broker in the good state of Virginia and With County. When you decide on closures of the entrance to the national forests, that you need to be aware that what it will do to our cost, our price of real estate. And I think that's very important to the county, that we, we, these people come a long ways to ride on national forests, and most of them are willing to pay the price for the national forests. And I think if you close them where they have to go in one particular area, then we're gonna lose that revenue that we have. And if you go down Rush Creek on one weekend, nice weekend, you'll see they're not shabby things that they drag those horses in on, and a lot of people want to come and stay, and you need to be aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, moving around along in the agenda, we'll put all that on the agenda for next, our day meeting. Building and Grounds Committee report.
Building and Grounds Committee met, we had an agenda on some upcoming security improvements at the courthouse, and you've got to tell one of them...
The Building and Grounds Committee met on April 7th, 2015, and recommended an amendment and appropriation in amount of $6,322 to account 43043-46007 for the replacement of defective batteries in the With County office building for the, what is that, something power. I interrupted.
UPS unit.
Okay. Come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Next item on the agenda is the draft resolution, electronic summons system, cost assessment. This is just a draft, we, our attorney hasn't looked at it or nothing. I'll just briefly explain what it is. They have equipment now, they can put in police cars that, on a summons, when you top, like a speeding ticket, they can take your driver's license and swipe it. All the information comes up on the computer. They have drop-down boxes, they just put the code, whatever the code is, if it's for speeding, you just fill it out, and then it prints the summons out. The General Assembly passed a law, a bill last year into law, that allows the counties to draft the ordinance to attach a $5 per fine, or per charge, to pay for the e-summon It cuts down a lot on the time that officer, you know, it takes an officer anywhere from 15 to 20 minutes on a traffic stop to write a ticket out. This will cut it down to probably six minutes, from what I understand, talking to people about it. The, and the more time they're not sitting on the side of the road, you know, as far as in danger of somebody hitting them from behind, is greatly cut down. But this is a draft ordinance that we'll, we'll look at, and I'm gonna make a recommendation and send it to the Budget Committee after it's been looked at and by the county's attorney. We'll take it, the recommendation from the Budget Committee. Does anyone have any questions?
So that fee actually, from what I read, means that it will start funding itself?
It funds itself.
It funds itself.
It funds itself.
Okay.
And we can also, when the monies are to pay, that pays for the equipment, we can adjust whatever...
Upper down.
Upper down. Well, I don't think we charge any more for $5, but we can bring it down...
Right, okay.
...to just cover the maintenance cost of it. Any other questions?
The court system is really infatible with this because...
Yes.
You're sitting on the side of the road, and you're writing names, addresses, dates, telephone numbers, and then the car and a copy gets pretty eligible, ineligible. It'll level...
Can't read it.
Yeah, what he said.
So the court system can get the proper notices and stuff, and the court document will be in a better shape than currently.
And if I'm not misunderstanding the clerks, they, a deputy can come in, plug this in, and download it straight to their system. So, you know, it's all our, but they do, I mean, they do have some problems reading some of the summonses, too.
So we'll have this to vote on for our next meeting, by that time?
Yes.
I have to set a public hearing.
Yeah.
Oh, set a public hearing, okay.
This is an ordinance that requires...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Obviously has to be resolutioned. Publicize in the paper twice.
It is an ordinance.
And a public hearing.
Any more questions? Okay, next item on the agenda is Town of Pulaski Law Enforcement Mutual Aid Agreement. Mr. Dalton, would you like to speak, I mean, self-explanatory?
We have mutual aid agreements with all the surrounding localities, and this is one that's just expired, and requires the board approval to renew.
Okay, I entertain a motion that we'll enter into this mutual aid agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that move.
I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, to enter into, with the Town of Pulaski Law Enforcement Mutual Aid Agreement. Is any further discussion?
I take it this is just basically a carbon copy of what we've done in the past?
Actually, it's the same one we currently have, but it expired about a month ago.
Yeah. I figured it was, but I didn't have the old one to compare to, so.
It hasn't changed. Any other questions? I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes. Next item on the agenda is software system. Mr. Dalton?
I have a memorandum for myself, for considering software system. We have been, as Sam talked, said, for an extended period of time, been looking at systems, we've looked at taking different components of different systems and putting them together. Even those really didn't, ended up costing high maintenance fees, higher than a consolidated system. At this point in time, it'd be my recommendation that we discontinue negotiations with everybody except Tyler Munis, which did provide a proposal, and start the negotiating review process. Tyler Munis system is sometime bringing back forth for the super project. It was the only proposal that was truly integrated, from the list of things that was requested, and is inclusive of all its programs.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the county administrator. I have a motion. Well, I'll say this, you know, before we start, and I think it is, we need to take into consideration Sam and Fay. Fay, Sam, when do you think you can go to Roanoke, and we can, and I want to go, too? We can go down and look at this system.
I'll try to make arrangements with Kevin and their commissioner, and try to do it this week if we can.
Okay, can we do it before next Thursday, before the Budget Committee?
Yeah.
And we'll bring it up at the Budget Committee and discuss it, and then let the Budget Committee will make a recommendation to the board at the next meeting.
I'll call Kevin tomorrow, and let you know when it's set, and I'll go down.
Okay, just let me know.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you...
Yes.
If it goes back to the Budget Committee, as a member of the Budget Committee, if we could have some type of, you know, evaluations or something, I guess, I just don't know enough about it to... enough about it to say yes or no.
We have a book that evaluated, the reason it got kicked out last time is that being a budget, top number of 475,000, approached it, got kicked out because the cost was exceeding the budget amount. But Tyler Munis trying to pick and choose, I guess, between winners and losers. We were trying to integrate a group of different systems into one. And even with that, I'm not sure that we had anybody liking any of those systems.
Well, you know, there're gonna be some, Sam, some good and bad things about all of them. I mean, and some, and some things we're just gonna have to live with and, you know, and try to work around. But, you know, we've looked at Keystone, Sun Garden don't have anything for y'all and the commissioner's office and just the piecing together of all these, you know, if we start, that's where we're gonna save the money, the extra money cost for munis, we can save for what Sun Garden and Keystone will charge us for maintenance fees for a year or two. So, I mean, if we can go with, go with the one system, we're gonna have lesser of a maintenance charges on that than we would if we tried to piece this stuff together, which we haven't. I had, Mr. Dalton, have you heard anything back from Dr. Poole about what they thought of the system?
I have not.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just two comments. Number, first thing is, I've been through some of these in my other life and nobody really likes the change of systems because you get used to using one and change is sometimes difficult, but, so I don't know that we'll ever find a perfect one, but I think it needs to do what, you know, what Sam and Fay need to do. Second thing was, I know when we were listening to budget presentations, there was some discussion about involving the auditors to see how that, I would assume since other counties are using it and the auditors are probably working with them, that there's no issues in terms of auditing information.
Actually, we did make that contact, there is no issues.
Okay.
On that side.
I already went all, for the most part, the accounting part of it, y'all use up here is always, that's available, that's good in most of the systems. But the assessment of the real estate seems to be one of the big issues. And if you can't assess a property and then collect the taxes, it's, this part up here teaches us too.
You can't pay for the system.
That's right. So, that Fay's part, it's been able to get the real estate assessment stuff done.
I think it'd be good if you guys had a chance to, you know, visit before the budget committee.
Before we all go down.
Okay. Well, you know, we got to, we got to come to some kind of conclusion. I mean, we've been beating this thing around for two years and it's getting to the end of my four-year term and that was one of my main goals the first year that I was on the board. And, you know, it's, it's been a difficult task, but we need to come to some kind of conclusion and move forward with a new software system for the county and this year, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'm like Sam, they are recessing until Friday morning.
Yes.
So, Friday morning is not working.
That's, that's right. I forgot about that. Friday morning, Monday morning?
I'll shoot for Monday, see what they get.
Okay.
You got a meeting at one on Monday.
Well, we...
Of course, you can change it.
We can go early Monday morning.
Okay.
And be back by one. Okay. So, we'll move right along. Mr. Dalton, have any other, under new business? Okay, does any board member have anything that needs to be brought up front of the board at this time? Here none, you have the informational pack you can go over. We'll recess until Friday morning at nine o'clock.